I have, um, my question is about the remote day. What so, when there's a remote day, you're bringing in students who need extra help, right?
Yeah, so what'll happen is every day when there's remote day, the students check in in the morning for attendance and then they have office hours for teachers if they need one-on-one help, that type of stuff. There's select students who we feel need extra support. So we're bringing those students in to meet with teachers, do some extra work, spend some time with even aides and monitors to overlook and make sure that they're catching up. And then we're doing that in K through 12, actually. We'll start bringing in some elementary kids as well.
Do, are the students that you're inviting to come in, are they actually coming in? Or do, do they not, are they like, no, they're not coming?
Uh, as Chris said, the last time, I think we only missed a couple of students in each level that didn't come in. It was like 21 out of 24, 22 out of 24.
Oh, yeah.
But this is a school day and if they don't come in, there's, you know, there's consequences for not coming to school. So, and we will have remote days in April, May, and June.
Can you say more about the elementary? I'm assuming that would only be people that are not coming to school that have chosen to be remote students?
No, the students who are struggling or might need some extra help. Teachers are asking to bring those students in so they can work more one-on-one with it.
Oh, so on a remote day, they don't get to be remote, they have to still come in, is what you're saying?
Right, that what they would do is still do the same thing, check in, still have office hours. So say they'll check in at eight forty and ask any questions for the assignments for the day. The day, we pre-set them the day before. And then there's an office hour, say from nine o'clock until ten thirty, where a student can speak with the teacher one-on-one. On top of that, they want to bring some students in to spend the day with them and work one-on-one with them to make sure that they're catching up, they're not falling behind, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Kind of a microcosm of what a normal day would be almost. And some of those days, you know, some days, as you would know in class, you just use it for catch-up or remediation, and that's what it's turned into.
I, I made that suggestion and it was, they were like, well, why, why is a kid who's not coming to school anyway? Why, why are they gonna come home, come into school on a remote day, so?
It's been pretty well-received and listen, I think the press has done a great job raising that to the parents and saying, we'll pick them up, we'll drive them in, we'll feed them, we're gonna be here to get the extra help.
Yep.
And we got a half a year left, let's make this work. And let's not dig ourselves in a bigger hole and make sure we can get out and pass our courses.
Yep.
So, it'd be interesting to see the third quarter results with the course values.
Um, I just have a question for Haley. Haley, um, how much money would you have to contribute in order to become privy to this top-secret information?
I would have to say, because with now with prom, I actually have, I'm in the process, and we're going to send it soon, written a letter to the Arcal Hall Foundation for asking money for that on behalf of the prom rapid testing. Which when I was talking to Mrs. Schaefer, she, it depends on what people have, what insurance they have and if it would cover the rapid testing she was telling me. Is that right?
I don't know how much the rapid testing would be covered for insurance reasons unless you're given a doctor's note to do it, but I think we're looking at other options.
Gotcha.
Couldn't we use our own equipment?
We're looking at some of those options.
Okay.
We're looking at possibly, um, bringing in nursing staff and then using our tests. That's a, I don't want to put the burden of 130 tests on a couple of people. Uh, it's a, it's, it's, it's a challenge to put the ECLAR system in, so if we hired nurses that are strictly doing that, we can use our tests and just pay the nursing staff.
Right, that would change the budget contract test.
Yep. So I, I think, talking with Bosse's this morning, I'm constantly optimistic that we're gonna be able to work something out.
I like that a lot better than what Michelle talked and told me.
Yes.
I'll give it a try, it changes with time.
So, as a follow-up in the same vein, how much is the class short of what they need?
Well, we have been working around it uncomfortably if we want at least two thousand more, because what we've done is with our senior trip, we've modified it to where we're going, we are going to be going to a state park rather than a state amusement park, which could be X thousands of dollars, even though with restrictions, they're currently at like 33% capacity rate. So definitely with that, with some sort of security, we're in like $2,000 to $4,000. But that's something where I would have to look at specifically with my advice and be like, hey, what's the dollar signs?
And it's all depending on prom, how that's gonna shake out, right? You don't have to worry about the picture right now. And, you know, we'll talk about some transportation issues later on.
Well, I would, I would encourage us to have a number and discuss that as a board. Because we did talk about funding trips and things like that, which hasn't really happened and hit the budget the same way. So there should be some monies that we could look at to assist.
And definitely we made our top-secret senior events something that wasn't so costly to us. Uh, one of them is something outdoors where it wouldn't cost. If there was anything, it would be transportation, that can be something that can be worked out.
Give it up too much information.
It could be, I don't know, interact with him, he talked to him. Don't let him know, shh, quiet.
They're all cost-effective, Haley, that's all they need to know right now.
Exactly, all it's now, top secret.
So do you think next board meeting, you could bring us real numbers on that?
Of course, yep.
Okay.
You can't forget all that stuff worked out, right, with the testing. We'll talk about it later, but, talk about the prom.
Moving right along to the finance committee.
Oh, you should have.
No, I'm like, yes. Every cycle leaves everything again, my head's still swinging.
Okay, so.
They either build into it or you guys want to go ahead.
No, it's fine.
Yep.
Um, so admittedly, it took us a little while to get our heads wrapped around it because we were dealing with, um, the, um, fund balances and trying to project them over years and making sure that Pete and I had them straight in our brain so that we could have intelligent conversation. But, um, the, the overview is, we're gonna have a very comfortable end of this budget year, although we don't know the exact number. We anticipate we will have a healthy compared to our past end-of-year overall fund budget. However, our district will be on a different cycle than some of the other districts with, um, I don't know what those, uh, parameters are called with the, the extra.
Stimulus money?
Or the tax cap? No, the tax piece.
Tax cap.
Tax, the tax caps are gonna impact our district differently on a timeframe perspective than some of the surrounding districts.
We had deferred building aid issue.
That's what it was, deferred building aid. So specifically for this year, we will, um, we're able to tax up to eight point something percent as an increase. But next year, we're anticipating our max tax availability will be probably like 1.5 to 1.7%. Um, and we're anticipating that some of this aid is gonna be one-year hits with one-year requirements. So we tried to project out over the next three or four years and we think that's the way we need to be planning by putting some money into reserves that we can, over the next four years, be taking that money out on a schedule and using our overall fund balance on a schedule so that we make it through the next three to four years without having astronomical tax increases like some of the districts around us. Our desire is to keep that in the three-and-a-half percent kind of range and not have to go over any tax caps like some of the communities around us have had to do. It's gonna take a lot of planning. We're, you know, it's hard enough a lot of times for us to do one year and we realized tonight, Pete and I realized tonight, they already knew it. Pete and I realized tonight, this is really more like a three- or four-year plan for us to make sure we don't screw up the tax piece with our taxpayers.
So we have foundation aid that's your base, we're heavily funded by the state, right? So our foundation aid is a big piece. That hasn't been touched in two or three years, that that hasn't gone anywhere. You hope every year that goes up a solid four percent, you know, and you're increasing. When that doesn't increase, it's a repeat of what happened back in 2008, 2009, when you're now playing catch-up now for years later because it continues to, that's what fuels you. Next year another four percent, next year another four percent, and that holds steady to nothing. You're not like catch-up future. Not to mention our COVID expenses that we've spent already, that we've drilled down in our fund balance and drilled down in our reserves to make sure that we can do that. That money's coming back in ways from stimulus, but what's gonna happen over the next three or four years, that stimulus money will be gone, meaning it's not gonna be every year hit, but your foundation aid is gonna go up very slightly incrementally. So we're gonna be left with a huge gap every year. So we need to plan the next three to four years to have the reserves and the extra funds to meet that gap so our tax burden is much lower on everybody.
Until it catches up where we need it to be.
No, if the state doesn't catch up three-year, four-year, then everybody's in trouble.
It's a totally different game.
Right?
And everybody's in trouble. The good news is we, we will have, that what we've done over the last two years is given us a fund balance coming out of this year that will enable us to do this. We, we should be able to get through this without having the problems that the districts around us have had.
So when we look at, you know, we can go up 8.33 and we go out at, say, you're using it as an example number, 3.75. Looks high, but next year is probably not gonna be any higher than 1.5 or 1.2. We go out at 1.2, 1.3 this year, 1.2, 1.3 next year, do the math, right? Now you have two-and-a-half percent over two years to pose what we're accustomed to at two-and-a-half percent each year. So then you're playing catch-up with that along with the foundation aid. So I think you gotta be very strategic. And obviously not tax, tax gap would be well half than the tax gap if we go out with what we're anticipating. And then next year will be even lower because our amount will be lower. So on average, it will be the same as they, you know, what we've done every year. And then we'll be able to fund ourselves for three to four years without taking a hiccup to make a tax base go up like some of our local school districts that had to tax 20%, 15%, and then they're gonna go up again at 8%, right? That's very tough to swallow, and we don't ever want to get there. Does that make sense?
What we started to talk about was this year communication's gonna be really, um, complicated because we, we had comments last year, why did we have a tax increase when we had a reserve? Well, we started this motion over the last two years, right? And it's what's enabling us to be in a position to not have some of these real critical issues that some of the other districts are experiencing. And we're gonna be even more so in that picture this year because of our fund balance. Um, so we're probably gonna get more criticism from that perspective. So we really need to make sure that we have a good communication plan to explain how this is looking over the next four years for us to tell people why we're putting this tax increase in this year because we can't do it the next year. And the sum of all this gets us here without ever having a high burden tax increase. It's gonna be complicated.
Okay, any, anything to add, Lee?
It's a good news story, it's just complicated.
Yeah, it sounds bad, but it's not.
Any other questions?
Leah, anything we left out, or?
No, we can just, I mean, you, if you go to the next, um, section, the tax cap calculation is in the, um, Word docs, and that just shows that the cap is the 8.33%. And that was reported to the state.
And you want to just explain again to the rest?
Yeah, basically, we have this deferred building aid of about $550,000. And that's what is causing the big jump in the tax cap. So in the calculation, we have this deferred aid, but you have to take it out of the calculation. So it's kind of saying, you're not getting that aid, it's deferred to next year, so therefore you can raise taxes this much more because of that deferred aid. That's just the way the calculation is.
But next year we'll have a lower.
But next year that's gone, so it goes back to normal, but it's gonna be a lot lower than that, so we won't have that deferred aid. So basically, the $550,000 is now in the calculation a different way and now you can't. Um, it's counted as your aid for next year's, in next year's tax cap calculation. So now it's saying, you have this extra $550,000, therefore your tax cap is gonna be 1%. It's just the way that the calculation is, it's, it doesn't make sense, but.
And this year some local districts.
That's all you have, this one-year bump.
Are hitting the low mark, like there's local district at 0.4 or 5%, and other local district at 1.33%. So they're getting hit with that little amount this year, we're gonna come and get hit next year with that.
How much of our funding comes from the taxes?
Total tax levy, or is that what you mean?
The total amount, I was just curious, like, is it a million coming from taxes or from our, for local, like?
From, from, collectively from our taxes?
Roughly a third, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-four percent.
Third.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, obviously, this is all gonna become a lot clearer, um, at the April meeting because then the state budget will be adopted and we should hopefully have some clearer picture about what's gonna happen with the COVID relief funds. Um, because, uh, you know, in the past, what at least Cuomo's tried to do is, you know, give us the COVID stuff, but then take back money.
Right.
And, uh, you know, there's also some other things he's proposed, like including the STAR reimbursement as part of our foundation aid, um, having a services aid that would remove the, the, uh, you know, the reimbursement for transportation and a number of other things. And so this is all up in the air and I'll, I'll address some of this in new business in terms of some advocacy that we want to do on that.
So that's, that's a, that's a good point, Mark. For us to create the picture we just gave you as a snapshot, we, we definitely made assumptions on those things just to get an idea of what we think our best estimate would be.
The good thing about the stimulus being passed now and the budget people first will have real numbers in the first. So to be able to see what it really is gonna look like. But there's some, there's some pretty hefty numbers there that are coming, that's coming forward. So I think, Leah, go forward with the rest of the budget stuff. Mark?
Hold on, let me get that, this thing keeps shutting me out and I have to go back in again, I don't know. Computers don't like, okay. Okay, so go ahead, Leah.
Yep, um, the second, um, tab under the reports, deed, debt service. That's just the summary of our debt service that is also included on the big sheet that shows the full budget.
Can, can I ask a question about the debt service?
Yep.
When, when is the next, when do we expect the next capital project payments to start coming in? Or is that already incorporated in this?
The, the payments for the project that just got completed, those payments?
That one?
Those are included.
And the next one that we're planning?
So that's not in here, so then.
In what year would that?
I think it's 2023.
2022 is when we vote on it, December 2022, and we start December, we start the following year with the project itself.
So when would we start paying for it, that following year?
Probably in 2024.
End of 23, probably, that's gonna take six state months for the state.
Probably the school year 23, 24.
And do we have any idea what that's gonna cost us on an annual basis?
For the new project?
Yeah, for the.
I don't know that.
Okay.
We're gonna meet, um, in May in terms of preliminary numbers again and then start to do committee meetings in the summer.
Cause I was just looking at this and, you know, we've, we've got that $818,000 worth of savings from a local share perspective, that's the way I'm reading this, is that correct? So, you know, we have, we have the ability to offset the local share of the capital project and still keep this not at a expense, much of an expense to taxpayers.
We estimated about a $2.7 million project zero tax impact.
Yeah.
So as we talked, you know, we will talk more, but we talked about doing a project zero tax impact and then maybe drawing one up that has more wants. If people want to do that from a community side, the committee would then propose to implement.
The reason I'm thinking it might make sense is rather than have this be negative, if we keep it flat, right? That gives us the ability to maybe do some of the capital, some of the other capital projects we've been talking about and really still have no impact from a long-term financial annual layout.
Is it the $100,000 projects you're talking about, or?
No, 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 I'm talking about like, we, we put off that entrance and their parking lot and just stuff, you know?
Yeah, we'll get some real hard numbers.
Cause $800,000 is a lot of money.
Yeah.
In net savings there, so I'm just thinking that that might be a good strategic move.
Yeah, we'll get some hard numbers in May.
Yeah, and I'm here, it does, it is the year 24, 25 is when we would want that first payment to hit, so it evens out because that's where it shows the drop going down, the 24, 25s later.
And I, I realize all of what we would save from that point forward is much less than the $800,000, but it's still several hundred thousand dollars there.
Any, any other questions, comments? I have one which I know I've asked before, but I'm getting senile, I forgot the answer. How is it that we get more building aid than our debt service? I mean, how, how does that happen?
Honestly, I don't know, it's all in how those calculations are done with all the other past projects that are, that are still being paid for and when they started, when they ended, what's the rate, all that stuff. So I don't honestly know exactly all the ins and outs of that. And our aid ratios, so.
That's all figured out for us.
So it's a business plan.
Well, it's a very difficult.
Yes.
You don't have just one project, you have a couple built in and it's over again. That's why you pay the big bucks to the financial planners, to get the biggest bang for our buck.
Okay, any other questions, comments on that? Um, then we still have the special ed.
Yep, um, on today's, well, on the budget timeline was special ed for tonight. And this is what we, the same format as we did last year with the special ed. Um, there's only three codes in this and it has basically stayed the same, just the tuition has gone up a little bit for next year, just because that's how tuition works.
Hey, any questions, comments? I, I just don't, how much of this, if any, is reversed by the state at this point?
We do get some money back for the private and public placement, it's called public access cost. And it depends on how much you're paying out and they have other calculations that go into that too, but we do get some of it back on, on the tuition.
Is that's another one?
It has to be over a certain level, anything over like, I think it's like $47,000, then you get something back, so.
It's mid forties for one, for one placement.
Seven, yeah.
Because one of the other budget proposals from Cuomo is that the state contribution toward any of that is gonna be eliminated.
Right.
So hopefully the, the Assembly and Senate will not go along with that because again, it's, it's really hitting us hard. Uh, cause you know, we have a number of placements and it adds up and, uh, but we'll see. We'll know, we'll know in April what's happening with that.
I mean, you count on funding for that.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on that?
What's our cost per student? Not special ed, but our cost per student, just average?
In terms of overall for, just a little bit over $20,000 or $21,000?
About 20s maybe.
Okay.
So, we're, uh, we're kind of at the middle, kind of higher end from the, you know, local. That comes out of May too, so we'll have another.
I was just comparing my mind the difference, that's all.
Yeah.
It would, it should be the, would make more sense that the state's in aid above our average cost per student.
Yeah.
Right, that would make much more sense.
Okay, then the rest, the last part?
Yep, so, uh, this is our big sheet that we call it, budget sheet. Um, so this has been updated for what we just went over, the special ed. The, um, debt service, I believe, was already in there last time. Um, what we have changed is the Bosse's. We got all that information, we went through the entire Bosse's commitment. And Bosse's is increasing right now at around $150,000. All, I mean, all the costs go up and we have some special ed placements that have been moved around and we had some new, um, movements into the district.
But you said that was mostly specialized, it wasn't like contract stuff that they're trying to serve.
No, I mean, they all go up slightly, they're never gonna go down. But it's everything we have now and it's all increasing slightly, but special ed was the big one and, um, you know, you have your regular, your, your tech services, all that stuff goes up.
We didn't, we didn't get to talk about that tonight, but I know in the, yeah, a few years ago, I wanna say Leah, it was three years ago, but maybe I'm wrong, time has flown, um, where their, their service fees went up quite a bit. We really looked very hard on our services.
So we have HFM services, but then we also have services through CAP Region Bosse's in Albany. CAP Region charges a fee to HFM who then, you know, comes to our bill. It used to be 4%, now they, now it's four and a half percent. And I mean, unless you can do all that stuff on your own in the district, you have no other option than to just.
Especially if you need 8% back a year later.
Right, and then you do get some of that back on. So Bosse's is up, um, other than that, nothing really changed on the top part. You'll see that the expenses now are up $528,000. Um, on the bottom, I added a column for three-and-a-half percent tax increase and then I do have that max amount that shows the max amount for the tax cap at 8.33. And as we were talking about before, we have that one-time COVID stimulus money of 1.2 million, which is really just kind of causes an issue with how we're gonna show that. And next time I'm gonna do a little bit more of.
A little more comment.
Expla, yeah. Of, uh, the negative on the bottom, at the last line, the negative, is actually a surplus of revenue over expenses right now. So negative usually you think is bad, in this case, it's good in a way. So I'll kind of put a little bit different, um, title for that next time. But right now we have more revenues than expenses. So we're gonna have to decide what we, how we want to put that out there, like what we're gonna do with that or, you know, maybe bring, even if we bring the top part, even if we bring the budget down, we're gonna have even more revenue than expenses.
We, we talked about that tonight and.
It's the first time it's ever happened, like since I've been here, like, I don't know what to do with that.
We, we believe that we have a plan that we will bring to the board, but we wanna see some numbers get finalized a little bit before we do that.
Just, just to mention that another thing that is being asked for by NISBA in their, in their advocacy effort is to raise the unrestricted reserve limit above 4% given that school districts are facing a very daunting future. And, um, so that's part of the package.
That'd be wonderful.
And that's part of the package that they're pursuing. Um, I have one question, what are the other sources of revenue, what are those?
Um, it's charges to other districts that, you know, um, we have like a special, they have that new special ed classroom, so we charge the other districts to have their kids come here, there's interest, um, the pilot payments. It's everything else that doesn't fall, it's fitness center fees, it's a whole bunch of different little things that don't fall into the property taxes or the state aid revenue.
And I, I don't see anything with the federal aid, where, where's that?
See the stimulus down there?
No, no, I don't mean the stimulus, I mean the regular federal monies that we get.
That's all with the grants, that's not in this budget. That's all grant money.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't give a federal aid, that's all that matters.
All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Leah, and thank you, Finance Committee. Hopefully we'll have some good, good news next month.
The good and bad is we'll have news in the next board meeting, but we'll only have two board meetings to solidify the budget and approve, so.
Okay, so move on to approvals, I'd like to see a motion for a consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, um, so we can start with the minutes, is there anything on the February 11 minutes? Good? Everyone? Okay, how about the twenty fifth? Okay, yes, good? Okay, bills, any questions there? Well, while you're looking, I have a few, I guess I'll do those. Number fifty nine, seven twenty nine, day automation systems, forty five thousand.
That's part of the hundred thousand dollar capital outlet project. And I believe they were doing the lights or the doors.
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 Okay.
That's part of that.
And then fifty nine, seven forty one, Junior Library Guild, I think I've never heard of them, you know, where is that?
That's, um, yeah, all the periodicals and stuff that the middle school library and the East Hill Library, yeah. I think that's like the expense for the whole year.
Then fifty nine, eight oh five, HMK of New York.
Yep, that's the new company that um, we use for the new vision plan. And that payment is like the first six months because we didn't pay them yet, so.
I'm sorry, for what plan?
The the new vision plan.
Oh, new vision, okay, thank you. And then um, under the federal fund warrant, on check number thirty nine nineteen, quality and insurance tech court.
Yep, that's for the PTEC program, they ordered computers, it's a company out in Western New York. But it's for PTEC, through the grant.
Okay, but we're just, we just fronted that money, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then number thirty nine twenty? I forgot to, I forgot to write the name.
Same, it's the same company, yep, as again, for the PTEC grant.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
I already caught all of my head.
Okay, we can move on?
Can I ask a question that's not in here, but what is our COVID expense up to now? Roughly?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It's not running much more than what we anticipated.
No.
No, everything that we put in there originally, there hasn't been really any additions to that.
You know, we haven't had to buy extra supplies, we haven't had to buy extra cleaning, we did a really nice job. Actually, some cases, I think we have in sanitizer for the next eleven years, but we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, anything else on bills? Okay, Treasurers Report, I didn't even look at it because I didn't want to.
I didn't have any questions.
Anyone? Okay, uh, budget transfers, any questions or comments there? Okay, tax cap calculation, we already kind of went through that. Any any additional questions? Okay, TRS sub fund, any questions there? I I have a question, um, why do we need a sub fund for TRS as opposed to just TRS?
Yeah, it has to be set up under the, we already have the ERS fund and this has to be under that fund, it's just the way that the state decided to do it.
I have the same.
So you can't, you can't set up a TRS fund without already having an ERS fund, but we already have the ERS fund, so now we can do the TRS fund.
So until I attended the Finance Committee and we dug into all these reserves, I was like, why the heck do we need this when I read all the boardrooms? But basically what it is, is it enables us to have another reserve that we can draw from. That um, we can take some of our overall fund reserve and put it there so that our fund reserve doesn't put us bad marks, right? The problem is the max contribution is a hundred and twenty thousand because it's based on the salaries of a certain population.
It's only going two percent of the salaries.
So it's not a lot of money for us, but it's at least something and we're probably gonna be counting on it as a part of our four-year plan.
That can only be earmarked for TRS expenses, any ERS expenses.
Yes, okay. But we can pull out of the reserve.
If necessary.
If necessary, up to our annual amount of a hundred and twenty thousand. So work is kind of just like the ERS from that perspective.
And the state just did this two years ago, they just started the month.
Okay.
And this'll let you know, these were drawn up by our legal team, so we want to make sure they were done.
Okay. By the way, just wanted to let you know that our our attorney is now a partner in the firm.
Yes, she has been, actually.
Right, well, I just heard, I just heard. From my ears to your, okay, uh, anything else on the sub fund? Okay, then we have the bus lease proposition, anything there?
Um, Nick gave us a little lowdown in the Finance Committee, I don't know whether the Transportation Committee is aware of this or.
Well, the bus leases too, there's a bus lease and a capital reserve.
Okay.
The bus lease is the proposition which we went over in the Transportation meeting.
Okay.
You know what we were gonna purchase this year for buses? And then the next thing is the capital of the bus reserve, which has to happen every ten years. So we just redue it for every ten years. And the difference this time compared to last time is the total amount of money that you put into that reserve over ten years. So when it reaches two point two million dollars, two point three million dollars, we can put up to two point three million over ten years. And that money is is funded by the reimbursement that we get following year from the buses that we purchase and then we pay out what we have to pay for the lease payments. So that's why it looks like, oh, we're putting two point three million dollars, yeah, over ten years, so on average, two point three, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars goes in there a year.
Uh, it's not building up like a reserve, it's basically an expense account that money's going in and money's going out to pay the lease payments.
We'll never have two point three million, but over ten years, we'll have two point three million.
That has gone in.
Correct, right.
But that same amount minus the year, depending on your timing you look at, will have come out to pay for the buses.
And again, that was all set up by our legal to make sure it was done properly.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, moving right along, then we have the annual budget hearing notice. Any any issues there with the dates or anything like that?
I didn't look at the dates.
They're all correct.
They're all what?
They're all correct.
No, 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 I meant.
Oh.
Are they all, are they all Thursdays or?
They're all coming quick.
Well, as as part of that, um, of that item, I talked about that the Board of Education petitions are due by April twentieth. Um, do you know what is the first date that you can get the petitions?
There's no state standard for that, it's really at our discretion. Up until about two days ago, we have been waiting on state guidance. There was a proposal on whether to not require petitions like last year or go back to the standard. And they've gone back to the standard of twenty five or two percent of your last budget vote. Um, so ours will be twenty five, um, so I plan on having petitions available at the end of March and we'll get some information on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Um, anything else on that?
Scott running again.
Okay, then.
I am not planning on running again. But I um, have offered to Mark to be the community person on the Finance Committee that we supposed, we have supposed to have there.
No, we have that.
Now we have, now we have, since I've been on the.
Oh, okay, now we have a problem.
That's a bad. That um, that.
That's called a weapon for punishment.
That is what I suggested for.
It's his strength, so let's go with it.
I hope this stays on negotiation committee too, as the community representative.
I did.
Okay, so um, moving right along to the swimming and sports and.
Those are.
Sport planes.
Yeah.
Anything there?
No, nothing.
Same old, same old?
Same thing.
Anything on that? Okay, health and welfare services contract, anything new there? Nope, okay. Um, Ag PTEC mentoring, I'm assuming this again is, we're just laying the money out.
Yep.
I had questions on this. Do we, do we really get service from them? I mean, do our students really get some benefit from this?
They are supposed to be.
Yeah, they they're supposed to, they they do trips, placements, uh, not necessarily placements.
Yeah, I read this and it was more like a relationship with employers and.
It's more visits, it's more they set visits up, uh, correspondence.
And the real question is, are our students actually getting thirty thousand dollars of benefits from the the Chamber of Commerce for job placement?
For all of this, remember, this is for all the PTEC, not just us, this is from the PTEC group.
Yeah, it's for the Ag PTEC program, so like, that's the grant that's.
So it's under the grant.
That I made.
So much of this was our bill because it has your name on it to sign it on, that's a lot of money for our PTEC students.
We're the holder of the grant, it's not just our portion. Yes, it's everybody's.
Right.
This is just a pass.
Yeah.
And when those grants were set up, there was, you specifically had to have something like this in that grant, that's why it's there.
All right.
So.
Wow.
So for everybody? It's still at the price.
It's a hefty price. I I used to be a member of that chamber and I have a hard time saying that you're probably getting thirty thousand dollars worth of value out of that.
Be restructuring and put somebody in charge of placements? So there's more of direct.
So there is more direct, okay.
That's what the the plan is.
All right, because otherwise, I I would be hardfetched saying you're getting that amount of value.
No, we wouldn't have spent that.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, then moving on to policies, sixty one twenty one, sexual harassment of employees.
The only thing that, um.
Yeah, by by the way, just quick, the 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 updated highlighted ones, Mark asked the, and.
What I, what I did is I asked that more specific examples be included from the old um, policy, just so that it's more comprehensive. And more clear, I think.
The the thing that's nagging me about the two harassment policies has nothing to do with the current people. But it has to do with the experience of being on the board for the last five years and some of the incidents that we didn't learn of that were liabilities against us. And I just, I want to voice that I didn't necessarily see that aspect addressed. It addressed that we would be training and, you know, that you were authorized to do that and it addressed the board had a strong stance against and all of those things. I I just am concerned that, is there some way to beef up that? Um. Collaboration of making sure we're addressing issues that.
Or or reporting?
Or reporting so that we're we're working together on knowing there's issues and that they're being addressed, because I.
So down down here where it says Superintendent of Schools and is designated as directed development implement regulations for reporting, investigating, radiating allegations of sexual harassment, so there'd be something else in there after that, you're talking about just being said.
I'm just thinking that it should be that we're in the loop of that because we've, we've seen it not happen.
Yeah.
And it's not right.
Yeah. So I think something to the line of, you know, embedded, you know, embedded.
That there's some regular reporting mechanism or or something so that
Sure.
um, the board is, the board has maintained a prize in some way, shape or form.
If it reaches a certain level, for example, because you know what I mean, every allegation.
Certain level or. Or legal is involved or something, right, so that we're at least aware that, you know, because those become fiduciary potential issues and you know, some of those caught us off guard as board members and that shouldn't have happened.
Yeah, that makes sense. Let me look into adding a line or two, makes sense?
I like the policy, it's just that haunting thing that I haven't been able to get rid of reading this three times.
Yeah, I'll look into that and then um, we'll put it up for next meeting.
And it's only those two because I think both of them have the same issue.
Yeah.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to remove the sexual harassment policies from the the consent agenda? And wait for the next meeting on them?
If everyone else is comfortable, make that motion.
I think so.
Okay, all in favor?
Well, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, motion?
I made the motion and she's.
Seven.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we consider all of the meeting. And then um.
Just as a quick aside, it does say that the the reporting process will be attached to this document, doesn't it?
The the reporting process is mentioned, my concern is about the the inclusion of.
You're right, the stakeholders.
Right.
Who are correct, I know exactly what you're saying. So I'll put something together that I know exactly where you're going, make sure some reaches a certain level that it is, that it is communicated to the Board of Education. Yeah, I mean, obviously, like I said, something that we get and then we we find out it's nothing, we're not gonna report it, right, to you guys, but yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying too, but the the sentence says, these regulations are to be attached to this policy that you're you're supposed to develop. Yeah, there are regulations, they they gave us the regulations. And those are like, here's what happened, if there was, if somebody reported a sexual harassment, they would fill out this form for it then. So that would be put in.
So the those forms were also given to our district as a part of that?
Yep, yep. But I'll put that up a piece.
And are you guys comfortable with all the forms that they gave us?
Yeah, and the notion could have gotten.
Did it require much modification from our.
No, no.
Process documentation?
Very similar.
Okay.
Yep.
That's where you were going, right?
Yeah, it says that these are gonna be attached to the policy, we haven't seen them, we should be reporting on, they should be attached so that we can. I didn't catch that till. Yeah, I'll I'll put the regulations in it, that sounds good.
Okay, are we done with sexual harassment? Okay, then comprehensive student attendance?
I had the one reason that Mark was asking about.
Yeah, but I I had some comments on that. My my concern was that, you know, if students had excused absences, they could make up the work and the tests and activities and so forth. But if they had unexcused absences, they could not. And um, I really liked the language in the old um, policy redressing that because even if they would fail the course because of too many excused, unexcused absences, I really think it's a bad idea to cut them off and to just, you know, say, you you blew it, forget about it, you're, we're over, you know, we're over you. And um, so I would just like to read to you the way that the old policy addressed unexcused absences with students and see if if we'd like to improve that in the new policy. And so it says that students who are deemed by school nurse as being unexcused for an absence will have the opportunity to make up any missed lessons, tests, science labs or activities. However, these makeup activities will occur at the convenience of the teacher and will be offered on a limited time basis. Students who are deemed to have been through it will be required to make up any missed lessons, tests, science labs or activities. And, you know, like I said, my my, my feeling is that, you know, this really is trying to pull kids back in rather than just leaving them. It's just my my feeling and I just wanted to throw it out there.
And that's this yellow portion that's highlighted in here where it says it's the discretion of the teacher makeup, is that what you're?
I always want to put this language in at that point.
So I philosophically, I I understand where you're coming from and don't disagree to help people graduate. The thing that I think we would need to think about how we balance is, it's also not fair to teachers to give a student the ability to walk in and drop a pile of work on the teacher and say, well, now you have to grade this so that I can pass. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I mean, one of the things that I like about this, it says at the, at the convenience of the teacher and with a limited time for that to happen.
Which is the same thing as it's the discretion of the teacher.
Yeah, but I'm just, it's, it's, it just spells it out in a little more detail.
Well, I, I think, I think that is, Mark's suggestion, I think, implies that a teacher has to. Whereas this highlighted discretion of the teacher, there could be teachers that just say no.
I have a question, we're talking about children, how, how often are they absent from school with an unexcused absence and it's not their fault?
Unexcused absence.
Depends upon the grade level.
Right.
Yeah. And I think that's why that discretion piece is in there?
Would it be not their fault?
And if that, if a kid isn't coming to school, there's a lot of times, I mean, I could see a kid being, having an unexcused absence, but it's a parent's responsibility to make sure that they get here.
If the parents are involved.
But are we talking about eight-year-old kids here?
What's that?
No, we're not talking about eight-year-olds.
How do we know that?
It could be.
It could be, but, I mean, we don't have any data really and, you know, I mean, it's really not up to us to decide at what age a kid is responsible for getting themselves up and ready, that under eighteen, their kids.
Which I think that's why we wanna keep like the discretion on the teacher because every case is so different. So for example, in case, a student might be, a student might take full advantage of the unexcused absences and blowing them off, you know? And some kids are having trouble, right? Some kids are having trouble with their home life or something comes up and we give that teacher the discretion to help that student. So I think before, what Mark was saying, it didn't read that at all, it just says.
I don't, I don't think that's fair, I don't, I didn't wanna see it, you know? Teachers making individual decisions about what kids are worthy of their effort and what kids aren't. That, that doesn't seem fair to me, I think kids come from lots of hard places and some are more capable than others of managing their circumstances and I just, you know, we have teachers who have master's degrees who, this is their profession, I think that it's not too much to ask. I, I don't see a kid who's intentionally missing tons of school having the nerve at all to, you know, dump a high level of work on a teacher.
You'd be surprised when it adds to your, your next graduate.
They do. They do. Like I said, depends upon.
Happens all the time.
We're talking about graduating though, right? So does this policy cover?
Moving to the next grade?
Yeah.
Or sometimes even at the end of a quarter, a kid will be like, oh, I'm gonna wait last since the night before is the quarter, last day, alright, pound out, tell you assignments, I know those kids.
This part of the policy speaks to just the high school level.
Correct.
Um, I don't remember.
It does, it's that paragraph says at the high school level, any student with more than nine unexcused absences.
Isn't there a state requirement around how many?
The recommendation is eighteen, because it's ten, it's a tenth of, ten percent of the year, one eighty, so, ten, eighteen. That's why it's nine and eighteen here, remember, NISBA drew this up.
Alright, well, let me, let me just suggest, I mean, do we wanna just go with the, achieve the discretion or else the other language, so?
I like your language, I think what would need to be added to it is that it might not be full credit or filled something.
But that goes back to what Heidi's saying, let's give that teacher discretion because you might have a situation where, where a kid is battling something and the teacher has that discretion to give full credit.
I, I agree, I said it might not because this doesn't address that at all, right? So I don't want people expecting that, well, I'm gonna get full credit if I wait, you know, seventeen weeks to hand something in.
Or maybe under.
No, wait, no, we're talking about that, right, like, we're talking about absences, unexcused absences, so not late work necessarily.
But it's the work from not being there, so I missed lab, so now I have the ability to hand that lab in, when do I hand it in?
So I have a time limit on that? Isn't that part of this policy, is that we set a time limit on that? Didn't we just discuss that, right? I, I'm okay with a time limit, what I'm not okay with necessarily is giving every individual teacher the right to make a judgment about a student's worthiness, that's what I don't agree with.
I don't think that's in there.
Well, the way this is worded, it, it does give the teacher the ability to say no.
And, and it is, remember, it's the ones that are nine and eighteen too, this isn't just for kids, that's for unexcused absences.
Right, this is for a kid.
This is the habitual absent student who's over that eighteen.
Who's over what?
Who's over that eighteen mark, eighteen unexcused absences, or, or unexcused absences in there at all, yeah.
I think maybe it should be the discretion of the teacher, maybe the PPS team. Because this way, not all the blame is being put on the teacher and it's, can't be one person who's making that decision, it's a team of people who are discussing it along with the teacher, you know what I mean?
I don't know, that's a lot of talk, a lot of kids.
I know, but how many kids, how many kids per year are we talking about? I don't know, you know what I'm saying, I, I mean, I can think of, you know, ten off, you know, and, and I'm in a small, smaller school.
I think that also protects the teacher a little more because there's gonna be a lot of interpointing.
Right.
But we also want in ownership of the teachers in their class, who run their class and know their kids.
Absolutely, they, they're part of that team.
And they should be the one, but they should be part of that team.
I'm just saying that it leaves them a lot more exposed if they're the single person making that decision and they say yes to one kid and know the other. Whereas if it's part of the team, then it's the teams.
I'd be afraid of putting in there that PPS step because now we're going to have to have a PPS meeting for every kid over eighteen, so I'd be a little careful.
Yeah, I think that's a workload that we would need to know what that workload is before we could create a policy.
Why don't you guys do this, think about it over the next couple of days and throw me what you think should be in there and we'll table this one.
Can you read that language one more time?
It's in the old, it's in the old.
Oh, the attached one?
The attached one, that's where I got it from.
Okay.
So if you wanna look at that, you just go back to the attached one and it's all there. I'd just like to ask Jen, while you're, while, what, you know, do you have any thoughts on this question that, you know, you would like to share? You don't have to, but if you do have any, I, I would be interested to hear them.
I can say that for our kids that are chronically absent, our PPS team is, you know, obviously very much involved in, you know, getting them to school. I, I will say this, that nine times out of ten, there is involvement, it's not a formal meeting, it's not formal this, but conversations with PPS happen with the teachers to say, okay, this is the scenario and it might be to, some of the board's point, it might be out of the student's hands, but that's why we then get other agencies involved, so there, there is involvement and I think for the most part, when we're looking at chronically absent kids, the teachers are making the right call saying, okay, we'll provide, you know, credit here and not here or we'll reduce assignments, because there's usually a lot more going on with our students that are absent chronically, so, that's kind of my thoughts.
I'm okay with your language if there's something added at the end that says, and might not be full credit. Might not have full credit given.
Alright, so let's think about it and get your thoughts back to Nick over the next week or so and then we'll have a final consideration of that as well. So I would entertain a motion to table that policy as well until the next meeting.
Motion.
Seven.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next thing is non, non-resident students, any comments, questions there? Are we good?
Good.
Okay, homeless children, anything there? One more time, are we good?
We have a regular number of students that fit this category in our district.
Which one they?
Homeless.
The others.
At any time, we're looking at five to ten.
Yep.
Are you comfortable, Jen, that this policy meets all the needs?
It follows the laws and regulations that we have to follow as, as an agency, it just outlines it and puts it in policy.
Okay, the last one's fifteen years old.
Okay, are we good with that? Okay, then student records, anything there? Are we good? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, thank you, moving on to personnel.
There's a coordinator and a coach, that's just a point of coordinator, it's the same person.
We had previously approved her as a coach, but she is coordinating the program and that's a separate, as another contract, so we can do it.
Oh, gotcha, alright.
Okay, any questions, comments? Could I have a motion to approve this appointment?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, thank you, all business.
Just a meeting data reminder, going upstairs next one and it's the, of March, I'm sorry, twenty. What's that? No, March.
Oh, yes, March twenty.
March twenty fifth.
Is it being held here though?
Cafeteria.
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 Yep, and just a reminder that April one is move back two days. I think get something done.
April one is what?
Thirteen.
April, the first, April meeting, April thirteenth.
It's Tuesday instead of Thursday. Do you agree to that?
At the last meeting.
So it's the eleventh?
No, the thirteenth.
Thirteen.
Well, this says Tuesday.
Tuesday the thirteenth rather than Thursday the fifteenth.
Sorry, I was on the wrong month.
Just a reminder.
May is the eleventh and the thirteenth. Nick, do we have to report Clear Act stuff? Clear Act.
Clear Act.
Of bias cases, harassment cases, et cetera.
Yes, yeah, every year we have.
We don't have any, sorry, the data form for the state of how many cases.
That could be another thing that you think about, maybe a way to get at that from a reporting perspective and make sure the board is there.
Actually, yeah, I'll take yours away.
Oh, your act. Bias and anything else?
Well, for, for the college, the things that fit under the Clear Act are bias, harassment and assault and things like that. I, I don't know what applies to the public high school or.
It's broken down by each piece, the bias, harassment, bullying, you know, it's just like six different categories. They're reported to like a, we call it a beta reporter here. Actually, it's, it's a new report, it's not beta, they changed it because it's federal.
Anyway, that might be something to look at from a reporting idea on that other thing.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on to new business, I just wanted to talk a little bit about advocacy. What I just passed out is a little bit rewritten beginning of a NISBA advocacy letter that they would like us to send to Santa Barbara and Hinchey. The first thing I'd like to say is that they have a link, which I have, which I would like to share with you. So, and they ask that all board members use this link and what it is, is I'll give you, if you, if you wanna do this, I'll, I'll send you the link, you hit on it, they have a form, you just fill out your name, address, email, and then say submit, and then it gets to the letter to Hinchey and Santa Barbara and then you say submit, done, takes you about a minute and you're done, you're done with it. And they feel it and they're trying to get all the different school boards to do that and it's, they made it pretty simple, stupid to do. One of the things I'd like to say on the negative side is that we tried to have an advocacy meeting with other school board presidents in Montgomery County last night, the only one I heard from was Bartholomew from Fort Plaine and they had a, their school board meeting last night, so we apologize for not being there, but I'll reach out to him about this as well as to the other school board presidents to encourage them to do this, that same thing. In addition to that, what Heidi and I talked about is making the letter that school board members are gonna be using, which you have the text up. I just changed the beginning of it basically so that it would basically include students, it would include parents, it would include teachers, it would include community members. And what I would suggest is that we get this out there on our Facebook page and on our website and, and design it so that people can just sign it and send it in the same way that we can. So they get, make it very easy for students, for teachers to contribute to this advocacy effort. It's crunch time right now, as you know, on budget negotiations and to whatever extent we can increase the pressure on our assemblymen and senators, hopefully we, we can get them to overcome some of these horrible, you know, proposals that Cuomo has come up with which would be very harmful to all of our districts. So I just wanted to share that with you all and, and Nick said that we'll work with the, with the tech people to try and get the letter, you know, in, in as usable a form as possible and, and then, and then like I said, if, if you all agree, I'll send you a link to the NISBA form that you all could fill out and just send it.
Is there a reason that the NISBA form couldn't be used by people in our district?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing, cause I read through that.
Cause that's all automated and that makes it super simple, you can just post the link and.
Yeah, we catch a little later and say, please, just hit this link.
Right, yeah, but I'm saying is, is.
The only thing is that the NISBA letter, I, I could talk to them and see, it starts off as, as district leaders and that's what I replaced with students, parents and so forth, you know, that's the first line of the letter that you had there.
Why don't you ask them and see if there's a.
I'll see.
It just has district members, wouldn't it?
Yeah, if we could, if we could edit that letter, then that would be great because it's, it's really very, very easy to use and we can make sure all the students know about it, all the teachers know, you know, I think we could probably get hundreds of submissions in that way.
Right, definitely.
So I'll reach out to them tomorrow and see if we can do that.
If you send that to us, that'd be great.
Okay.
And I would argue that any teacher, coach, et cetera is a leader in our district. So I think the distribution of that would be bigger, bigger than just the board members, for sure.
Yeah, I think we could do that, I, I agree with you and, but to get to the students and parents and community people, we need to just edit it a little bit so that it would.
Unless they're gonna have something, they might even, I mean, we suggested they might even build something for.
Yeah, but it wouldn't take much, they already have the infrastructure, it's really just cut and paste and copy it.
In their best interest, especially in the digital world, right?
Correct.
You guys would.
Easy, completely.
You'd do it six times.
Perfect.
Alright, so, so that's that and as I said, you know, what's the budget is, negotiations are finished, we'll see where we're at. But, you know, at this point, it's very much up in the air, but obviously with the difficulties Cuomo is having now, you will not nearly, have nearly as much clout as he normally has in budget negotiations and that I think will work to our benefit. And that's the feeling that's out there, I've spoken to a number of different legislators and all and, you know, they're optimistic that they can.
Well, not to mention the state's in better financial shape, again, the state has money coming for the state too, so there's two things working in their favor there as well.
And then just the final thing that I wanted to mention is that there is a growing consensus that some sort of wealth tax needs to be incorporated this year to deal with what you were mentioning in the coming years, you know, in terms of, and what Nick was mentioning as well, you know, that we're looking at some real financial difficulties going forward when the federal stimulus money is no longer coming in and people are aware of that and, or, you know, and especially with super majorities now in the Assembly and Senate, there's a much better chance than in the past that such a proposal can pass. And, you know, I, I've been working a lot with this Invest in New York program and, you know, one, one of the things I'm also, that I'd like to discuss at some point is, NISBA has always had a position that this is what we need, you figure out how to pay for it. And one of the things that I would like to have a discussion about, not tonight, but at a future meeting, maybe in April, is what our feeling is about that, because I would like to have a resolution presented to the NISBA not to mention that we also get involved in how to fund things, not to. not just what we want funded. Uh, but that's a discussion we can have and, and see, uh, cuz I think it's, it's not really doing the job, the full job that we need to do if we just say, you, you just figure it out, this is what we need. Because I, you know, one of the problems is that saying that, well, they say, we don't have the money. Well, we should also be able to, well, here's where you can get the money, is my feeling, you know, and, and I'd just like to have us have a discussion and see if we wanna propose a resolution to the, the, uh, next fall's, uh, NISBA conference that they change that position and start advocating for methods of funding, not just the amount of funding. So, and I, I'm not sure if you all agree or not, but, uh, I think it'd be a conversation worth having. Okay, um, so I, is, uh, anything else for new business? Then I would entertain a motion to move into exec.
Do we need to?
Is there?
Yes, there is.
There wasn't anything left?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go home, yeah.
No, it just, there was no document.
I know, this is, it came, just came up.
Oh, okay.
That was a couple.
Okay, well, thank you, good night, administrators.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, Leo, good night, Haley.
Motion second.
Motion second, thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.
Still think there's people on there, people on there.